I built a snowman with my brother. I went sledding, I decorated cookies, and I had hot chocolate. I went outside and built an egg room.
Went sledding and played with my friends outside.
My dad made a fire and we roasted marshmallows and I drank hot chocolate.
Heard hot chocolate.
Made snow angels and drank hot chocolate.
We went sledding, made a snowman.
Built a snowman.
Made a snowman.
We got bundled up really good and we made two of the highest snowmans.
We went inside and made hot chocolate.
We built some snowmans and my sister built a bunny. We went inside and we drank hot chocolate.
Me and my mom were building a snow bear.
My family and my friends had a big snowball fight.
We made a snowball fight with my dad and I had to be behind the tree mostly.
Made a belly slide so we could go faster on the snow.
Played football, drank hot chocolate, probably red.
Five inches.
Five inches?
Five inches.
Ten inches.
Eleven inches.
Probably about 100 or something like that.
Nine hundred.
The weather guy?
The weather man?
The weather man?
A cop.
He might be a cop.
Might be a cop.
A mayor.
A mayor?
As a firefighter.
You think he's a firefighter?
Yeah.
I think he works a lot.
Kind of like a banker.
He like calls off school for us.
But they're fun.
Whenever it snows, he'll call off school.
That the snow days that he decides are really fun.
They're awesome.
Snow days are awesome.
Make more of them.
I think maybe he played with his kids if he has kids.
Played with his grandson or grandkids.
Played with his grandkids.
Probably made hot chocolate and cookies.
Played in the snow.
Went sledding.
He built snowmans.
Worked a lot and played in the snow.
Look out the window and see if there'd be a snow day tomorrow.
I think he might just like sit around and watch TV.
Probably just sat around.
White and red and red.
What kind of books do you think he reads?
Uh, chapter books.
Probably played video games with his kids.
Barely did anything.
Be lazy.
Be lazy? Is that what you said? How do you be lazy?
You just mind your own business.
So before we start, the question from the board is what do you do on snow days?
I like the idea of making a snowman. That sounds okay. I'll try that next time.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Board of Education. I'm going to call it in order. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mungar?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
And the Open Meetings Act is posted between the doors as prescribed by state statute that it be posted. The approval of the minutes, you have minutes from the last board meeting after you've reviewed them. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, they stand approved as printed. We have no special reports or celebrations of success tonight. Now is the time in the agenda for anyone who wishes to address the board in public comment. Please come forward since I don't have any blue cards. If you wish to speak, you would have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have before us Human Resource Matters, Routine Business, Option Enrollment, Student Application for 2016-17. Lanny?
Kathy, I'd request that we poll item 8.3, the Option Enrollment Student Applications.
All right, that's been removed, so it will be at the other item later in the agenda. Yes, Matt?
I'd like to remove the Let's Talk contract. I'm trying to pull up the number in front of me. I don't have it.
It helps pull up the number. It would be under Routine Business, Matt.
Oh, are we just doing Human Resource again?
No, you just tell me.
I'm trying to... Oh, here it is.
So Let's Talk agreement?
Yeah.
All right, those will be moved to a later place in the agenda for items removed from the consent agenda. Don?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
It's been moved in... Connie?
I second that.
And seconded that we approve the rest of the items on the consent agenda. Lanny?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all payments to the Nebraska Association of School Boards as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8 is set forth in the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of the consent items.
Connie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to Nebraska Association of School Boards, the Boys and Girls Club of Lincoln, Nebraska, or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2.8 is set forth in the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, Laura, would you please call the roll noting the two conflicts of interest and the two items moved to later in the agenda?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have items for first reading from board committees. And that would be...
Randolph.
From the superintendent would be Randolph Elementary. I'm going to turn that over to Lanny Boswell, Chair of the Planning Committee.
This item comes from the superintendent, from Dr. Standish. It is one of the bond projects from the 10-year facility plan for Randolph Elementary. And I turn it over to Liz for any questions or comments.
Scott Weiscamp would be available if you have any questions related to this project, but it follows our standard process and you can see the bid responses and the recommendation in front of you that would come back to you for action at our next board meeting.
Annie?
I do have a question. Something that jumped out at me was that last, for our second reading, we have the Lefler Middle School Phys Ed and we only had one bid less than this one which had about five bids. So what is the difference?
We had a discussion about this a few weeks ago and it's just the bidding climate. We're bidding a project almost every week. And in some cases, we're in competition with other projects that are out there bidding. And so general contractors and subcontractors kind of pool their resources towards one or two projects on bid day and sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. The nice thing about Lincoln Public Schools projects is we always bid on Thursdays at 2:00. So that's kind of a standard timeframe. They know that. But it's just hard to work around city projects and university projects and all the others that are out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, this item will be back in two weeks for your approval. Next item is this classroom sound amplification system. Dr. Standish?
Yes, before you for first reading is a purchase that would be made in phases consistent with our budget. We went out to look for what would be the best quotes for a sound amplification system. You can see the responses we were given. The product that's being advanced to you tonight is one that had the highest sound quality. It was also the one that had the capacity in the future to do voice-over-internet protocol so that if we did do some capturing of lessons through camera technology, we would get the highest quality audio sound through doing that in the future. We thought it was the one that was the best recommendation to move us forward. I do want to point out that we have $812,000, just slightly above that, in the budget this year. So we would order and plan project orders based on that budget constraint. And then we look forward to the budget conversation for 2016-17 where we can report on, here's the number of units we were able to acquire within that budget constraint. Here's the number of additional units we need to cover the district and look forward to the future budget. Originally, we had thought this would be a three-year implementation. I think based on the prices coming in, we'll be able to have a conversation on whether it's a two-year or a three-year, but that would happen through the budget process. We would use this price for all of the purchases we would make, but our initial purchase would align with this year's budget.
Questions? Don?
This came up in technology and I'm trying to see if Kirk is back there somewhere.
He's not.
Is he... In our last Technology Committee meeting, Kirk talked a little bit about the process for the bidding. Is there somebody else that can talk about that a little bit?
Darren?
I can do that, actually. We assembled a team that included teachers. It was really, our audiologists were a great resource for us. We had electricians represented from FM, purchasing staff, and we had computing services. And we brought in each product line. We went through a progression. We had it set up in a classroom at one of our schools. We then had teachers that were able to use the product, give feedback on the product. And it really, the feedback from the audiologist on moving around the room, having some time to work with the equipment was really valuable. The nuances that they were able to look at is even the placement of the microphone, whether a microphone would cover a teacher's lips so that a student who uses the visual Q's, a lips, would have an obstruction. So I think it was a very thorough process with lots of input all the way from teacher level and then cross-functionally across the school district.
And the reason that I brought that up was because as it was described in the Tech Committee meeting, it was actually a fairly involved process with products or demos from several different companies.
Correct.
And as you'll recall, our guideline is to go with the lowest responsible bid. In this particular case, this isn't the lowest bid, but it is the lowest responsible bid. And the feeling that I got out of our Tech Committee meeting was that staff was very comfortable and confident that this was a good product moving forward.
This is the product we have had at Kohler, so we have had some experience with it. And it was the one that met all of our specifications. The primary specification would be the ability to have the audio input from the system carried over the internet so it could be captured with video and provide higher quality, which is something that I think none of us would rule out looking at a 10-year horizon for the school district, that we'd want to have the ability to do that from an audio system.
Annie?
And if I remember, another aspect from the committee was the sheer amount of audio equipment that we would need, that this also is the most responsible place that can help us actually meet our need. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
We did ask questions about the ability to meet supply. We do have 2,250 instructional spaces we're looking at. And even looking at doing, placing an order for 1,100 units is a substantial request of a company. So we asked questions about that as well.
Matt?
I was really excited. When I visited Kohler a few weeks ago, they talked about a lot of the technology that's going to be implemented there. The principal and several teachers told me that their favorite piece of technology that we're implementing there is these sound systems. They, given the choice, they would choose these over, if they had to choose between that and some other technologies. So that was really exciting to hear and see, and it was fun to see in place. One, just clarifying question, Liz, on this, Dr. Standish, is on this, are we approving, you mentioned the two and the three years, so is this an approval for just a purchase of the third of them? Is this approving the purchase of all of them? Just help clarify that for me, would you?
This would match up with the current budget authorization. So we will purchase the number of units that we can for the $812,000. So we would initiate a purchase for that after this comes back to you for second reading. And then we would put a deployment and installation process in place. And then I think we'll have a conversation as we develop the 2016-17 budget. This price would be fixed in. And then we would be able to make a purchase after the adoption of the 2016-17 budget and we'll see whether we can get the rest of the district covered or whether we still need to go to that third year.
And there is a few, like our new buildings, this is included in the cost of those new buildings? Is that right? Like Y-Song and stuff like that?
Y-Song and Moore were treated separately. So that was a separate process that occurred last summer along with the construction design development of those schools.
And did it, was it, or did we contract the same company for those schools?
I'm double checking. I believe we did. Yep, we did. It's the same product and the same company, yes. And it's consistent with the product you saw in Kohler that continues to, as you referenced, meet our specifications. So we've been pretty clear in our specifications and this product does meet the specifications.
Good. Don?
In my memory is that this is a slight acceleration of what we were originally intending to buy this year.
As far as quantities, but the budget will stay the same. So the good news is this did come in below our estimate of what a cost would be per classroom, which means we'll be able to reach more classrooms this year. And it opens the door for a budget conversation for next year as to whether we can maybe accomplish this goal in two years instead of three.
Barbara?
I just want to take a moment and say thank you again to our board and our staff for going and making this a reality. This has been something I've worked for for about a decade. And it's nice to see it come into reality. It's going to be a huge help for our teachers and our students. And I was very pleased with your report that the teachers are going and really appreciating this tool. So, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, this will come back in two weeks. Well, actually, it will come back March 22nd because we don't have a board meeting the first Tuesday or second Tuesday of March. Moving on, we have the proposed negotiated agreement from the Lincoln Education Association. Dr. Weber and Robbie Seabird.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I am pleased to notify you and share with you that the Lincoln Education Association and Lincoln Public Schools have reached tentative agreement on a two-year contract for the 2016-17 school year and the 2017-18 school year. And as a result, we are bringing that for your consideration this evening in a first reading. But before we share the details of the agreement, I would just like to recognize those involved. We have a great relationship with our Lincoln Education Association and a wonderful relationship with our teachers in Lincoln. And some of the members of that bargaining team are here this evening. We'd just like to recognize them. Rita Bennett, who is the President of Lincoln Education Association. I'll raise your hand. There's Rita. And Dan Studer, the Executive Director. And then we have Linda Frye, who was also on the team, kindergarten teacher extraordinaire. So we spent a lot of time with them. We bargained thoroughly this year and we are pleased to share this agreement with you. Mr. Robbie Seabird, who is our Director of Personnel and Employee Relations, will share the details of the agreement.
For the 2016...
Robbie, could you go to the microphone, please?
I will. For the 2016-2017 school year, it's a total package increase of 3.18%. That includes salary increase, health insurance premium increase of 4.9%, as well as social security and retirement costs as well. That equals about a salary increase amount of 2.88%, which means each employee will receive an across-the-board increase of $1,600. To put that into perspective, for a new teacher with a BA degree, that is raising $1,100 from $41,731 to $42,831. For the 2017-2018 school year, the total package increase is 3.19. That includes the 4.9% health insurance premium increase as well as the social security and retirement costs. The salary increase is 2.89%, which equals about $1,650 across-the-board increase for each employee. The BA for new teachers would increase from $42,831 to $43,981. With that, we'll open up to questions, to anything that you all might have about it.
Questions? Comments? Barbara? And then Don?
I just want to comment on how I was really pleased with the process and how dedicated all sides were in coming to an agreement in that I think this is a very fair package that recognizes the great value we have with our teachers and what they bring to our community and our students. And I appreciate the hard work that all have invested in this process.
Thank you, Barbara. Don?
Wow, that's a lot of what I was going to say. How happy I am that it's a two-year agreement. That gives us stability and increased ability to plan for the budget for the next couple of years. Also being a fair package that recognizes the high-quality work that our teachers do. I do appreciate the fact that we have such a good relationship with our teachers' union. I know that maybe some other districts don't have that. Lincoln is an example of collaboration rather than contention and I really appreciate that.
Connie?
As a former teacher, I feel it is important that we take care of those that dedicate their days to the success of each and every child in LPS. So I thank you for that every day. This is my first time to do this whole process and I found out that I also have to be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. So it was a little harder for me. But I think that we balance things well and it turned out well for everyone. So I thank all of you for all of your dedication and all of yours.
Lynn?
I would just add my thanks to everyone involved. I know it's an arduous process that you go through either every year or every other year. There's a lot of give and take that goes on and I just appreciate both sides for keeping a good process in place, keeping a good relationship in place. This is a sustainable agreement. This, as Don mentioned, provides some stability by being a two-year agreement. It's the first time we've had a two-year agreement in recent years. And I think it also helps us continue with our mission to attract and retain the best and the brightest teachers. So, well done. Thank you. I look forward to voting for it.
Okay.
Can I just say, I concur.
That would be Ms. Mungar. Excellence doesn't happen in isolation. It happens because of dedicated men and women who work each and every day with every student. And rewarding those individuals for their hard work is something that we do not take lightly. We have a responsibility to the taxpayers here to make sure the budget is spent appropriately, but our biggest responsibility comes to each and every child that walks through our doors. So for that, I say thank you to our teachers and every person who works for Lincoln Public Schools. I also want to thank both sides who did the negotiating in this agreement. Having a longstanding history in labor issues, I understand that sometimes it seems like you might not get there, but you guys kept your nose to the grindstones and you looked out for the best interests of not just the teachers, but of the students you serve and the district and our community. So thank you. Dr. Joel?
Yes, I would just add that I think if people were privy to the conversations that we have with our association leadership, they would be impressed at the quality of those conversations. That it's more than just salary and benefits. It's really about educational excellence and continuing to do, to be able to do the great work that's taking place in the classroom. We're delighted that we have a package that, one is sustainable, as Mr. Boswell said, but also gives us an opportunity to really address some of our strategic priorities in a difficult financial environment. So, great conversations, a lot of time dedicated, as was pointed out, but we truly enjoy the relationship we have with LEA.
And since I don't see any other hands, this will come back March 20, I think it's 22nd for your votes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to items, second reading recommended for action from the superintendent. Resolution for Option Enrollment for 2016-17. Do you have a motion? Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.1, the Resolution for Option Enrollment Students, 2016-17.
Barbara?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Resolution for Option Enrollment for 2016-17. Any other discussion? We discussed this two weeks ago. So Annie?
How does this incorporate the resolution we passed from North Star? Does this, you know what I mean? Because this says, you know, you can change. How does that...
Option Enrollment is actually... Jane, I'll let you go.
This is option enrollment, so this is students from outside Lincoln Public Schools, but they would still play by the rules of that resolution because North Star is closed to any students coming from another area other than the North Star area.
So does this mean that when that is closed, then we can't put in, there's no enrolling in? Okay, correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have the Lefler Medical, Ms... Lefler Medical Middle School Physical Education Classroom Edition for renovation. Lanny?
Move approval of item 10.2.2, the Lefler Middle School Physical Education Classroom Edition and renovation.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Lefler Middle School Physical Education Classroom Edition and renovation. Discussion? We discussed this two weeks ago. Seeing no further discussion, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have two items that were removed from the consent agenda. We'll start with item 8.3, Option Enrollment Student Applications. Lanny?
Move approval of item 8.3, Option Enrollment Student Applications.
Is there a second? Don?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Option Enrollment Student Applications. Lanny?
I removed this item from the consent agenda and it was just an issue of timing. We've just approved the rules under which we would approve option enrollments and so we discussed it, agenda planning, that we should probably approve the rules before we apply them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mungar?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes. Moving on, we have the second item removed from the consent agenda, which was the agreement with K-12 Insight, bid number 8449 for Let's Talk. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to move the approval of it.
Matt moved, and Lanny?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item, the agreement with K-12 Insight. It was bid number 8449. Discussion? Matt?
Yeah, I just had a couple, one question, well, several questions, but one was, this is a three-year agreement for $100,000 a year. Do we know what the cost will be ongoing from that or will it be determined at that point?
It's a fixed cost based on their company. It's $2.50 per student.
Okay, oh, okay. Interesting, okay. The other thing, I noticed that there had been some pretty significant improvements in the system from the LPS.org website. There had been just a bajillion categories and they've been really limited down. But I noticed that some of the schools don't yet have this on their site and some schools do. And so I was just wondering, I'm not sure who to ask.
I can answer that, I think, and if I can't, Mr. Neal can fill it in. We had, we asked several schools to pilot it because we wanted to bring it down to the building level. We've not yet offered it out to our buildings. So that explains why it's primarily Central Office, LPSDO, and a few buildings. The plan is this summer, we'll do some training, provide some training for our building principals so they have access to it. So we intend to expand it out and are anticipating a lot more usage. But we didn't want to overload with synergy and all of the other things that are happening at the building level. We wanted volunteers as opposed to having it presented to people with the expectation that they would be using it.
The other thing that just had come up at our work session, was that a month ago or so that we did that, was just concerns about this infringing on instructional time for teachers or becoming a burden on teachers. And I don't know, can anybody else comment on that? That kind of came up. I don't know that I quite got...
It's really not, it's not going to be designed for teacher use. I mean, this is going to be something that's going to be administratively handled. So as a call or a concern comes in or an email comes in or a suggestion or whatever, it'll get routed to the owner, which is going to be either an LPSDO administrator or the building administrator when we have them online. And they'll make that determination. So if there's a question about a classroom, that question is going to be presented to the teacher regardless. But we don't anticipate this being any more work at the classroom level than is already occurring. And we don't anticipate that much more work at the building level, you know, unless we get, unless a particular building gets mired into something that's very complex.
Barbara?
I have a lot of concerns about the cost, the ongoing cost of this. I had gone and asked some questions that did not get, I didn't get answer on. But the city has a very similar program that they built themselves in information services for probably about $50,000. And they don't have to pay ongoing fees. And they don't have to pay ongoing fees then. And so I was wondering if anyone ever actually followed up to see if we could go and gain from their expertise or not, and how that would relate. Because it's been my understanding that there's a lot of different vendors out there that offer this particular service, and they're all pretty pricey like this, but it doesn't have to be. Also, I would like to point out that I think a service like this is good and very useful, but it's only as useful as a person going and following up to go and make sure that the different departments and divisions that have the point person assigned to go and answer the emails or whatever, that it's actually happening. I mean, we have lots of ways of monitoring whether things are getting answered, but if no one's really watching and providing support to those staff. I think that oftentimes staff need training and things like mediation on how to go and handle some pretty tough emotional situations, or how to go and find out if a particular concern that bridges over several departments or divisions is either being handled or has credibility or not. I think that, I'm wondering if we want to be spending $100,000 on just the tax side of this issue.
Don?
I actually had some concerns about the system as well. And Barb, when you and I had talked, and I passed your questions and your information about the city system on to John, John was able to alleviate some of my concerns. And then I don't know if you had a chance to follow up on the system, if that's something that you could speak to?
Sure. I checked with one of the developers at the city, and they've had this system, and solely developed it over time. And I'm sorry, I'm going from memory, but I think it was about 2007, 2005 when it was first developed, and it's continued to grow. And it's very similar to some of the organic computer systems we have in LPS. Over time, it becomes very personalized and very specific to the program. They like the elements that they have. It's not something, from my understanding, that we could adopt, because it's very specific to the city of Lincoln. But they do like it. We could continue to talk to them and continue to see what we might do that's similar to that, but it's not like Let's Talk, something that's on the shelf that we can take and use immediately. But it was a great conversation. They also have, some of the pieces that were nice was the ability for the geocoding. So if you use a smartphone, it automatically has the locations. There's some other really nice features, but it's not an off-the-shelf piece that we can use right away from the city. Maybe something down the road, but the advantage of the Let's Talk was immediately off-the-shelf, ready-to-use for LPS that we could do immediately. But very helpful with the city, great people to work with and talk to and learn a great deal from talking to them.
Barbara? So my follow-up question is, is that I think as a board, we have to ask the question, do we want to plunge into this particular contract at this time and then go and see if we want to build our own system, if that would save us money? And if we can tailor it more to our own needs? Or do we want to maybe investigate that a little bit, slow this process down just a little bit to see if that capability exists for us? And see if we want to go and invest our money in going and building and tailoring a system and then not have these ongoing costs? And maybe take those ongoing costs to be able to go and fund some other aspect of this matrix of going and communicating well with our constituency?
Don?
If you have seven people, you might get seven different answers to that question. From my perspective, and from what I got from what John was saying, was not necessarily that we would want to start from scratch building a system, but the idea was that there were, there's functionality in the city system that might be good for us to try to implement with the Let's Talk or with some other system that we might be, if we decided to consider something else in the future. Part of the concerns that I had with this system were some of the ones that you and I had talked about, that we had talked about publicly, questions about making sure that information was going to the right place, questions about usability, some of those things. And one of the things that was an alleviating factor to me was the fact that in working with the vendor, we will have the ability to try to tailor some of this functionality. They will work with us to try to make the system very usable for us as we go forward. From my perspective and a background as an IT person, I think if we were to start from scratch right now developing a system, it would be, you know, very time-consuming and very costly. And there are some times when that's the right decision to make. In this particular case, when we have something, or maybe there are a few things we would like to adjust a little bit, you know, maybe it's not perfect right off the shelf, but it can be modified and has a lot of potential, and it comes at a good price relative to the market. That's something that, to me, seems very worthwhile to pursue. And then with some of these other neat features that we see in the city software or some of the other things that we decide we want to do, we can work to try to implement those things into this software as we go forward. So for me, the, I'm going to be watching it pretty close, to be honest. I was a little bit concerned about some of the feedback that we got from staff. We're going to want to be sure that what we're doing with the system going forward is something that's usable by staff, that's usable-friendly, and that is doing what we want it to be able to do for the money that we're spending. But I was able to get enough of my questions answered to feel confident going forward with this, that I felt like this was something that we would work with. So my answer to your question would be, I would be prepared to move forward with this software.
Any other questions, concerns? Barbara?
The question of follow-up and a person that can go and provide that support to staff to make this system really work still is out there. I do believe that that's probably more of a question for some committee work, but I want to highlight that it's still out there. And I'm a little concerned about the ongoing cost.
Don?
I agree completely with the concern that this is going to need some oversight, and I wonder if maybe this is something we just want to get on the agenda for technology when it becomes appropriate? Because then you and I serve on that as well, and we can just be part of that conversation along with Annie.
That feels good.
So I guess I'd put that out there as an open question to staff, if that's something we can get on the agenda when it becomes appropriate to do so.
Dr. Joel's got his head.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a fair request. We, what we have is close to 500 cases that have used Let's Talk. In terms of the training for the highly emotional issues, you know, I don't know that we've really, we've come across that yet. There's going to be times when a human being is going to have to intervene in something if something is that severe. But in terms of support for the folks that are owning the Let's Talk conversation, I've been very impressed with how quickly those are being resolved. And we have the ability, or I have the ability, to look at a district-wide dashboard at any given time. And that would be something, maybe if the technology committee had inclination and time to do it, we could, we could give periodic updates. We think that, we think this has made a difference in just the short period of time that we've used it. But there's always going to be times when somebody's going to need to see the superintendent because it's a very, very emotionally charged issue. We're not trying to dodge that at all. What we are trying to do is create a system of tracking so that we know that consistently through the district, as people are bringing us concerns and questions, we're getting them addressed in a timely, respectful manner, and then we're getting some feedback on how we did with that.
Barbara?
And I totally agree with that goal, and I think it's a very useful one, one that we can use in many different ways. And since Don has mentioned that perhaps we could go and revisit the issue about looking at a person that would oversee some of this, because I think as it goes alive, district-wide, that's going to be both a helpful tool and also start to bring forward some of the other issues that do need that more human touch, as you said. And I do think that is really useful for a district to have someone who is trained in mediation, who can be a go-to person, that can help staff with those kinds of situations. So I feel comfortable voting yes on this with the understanding that we can continue to have a discussion on this.
I will be supporting the motion to approve this. I also looked at the cost of development of our own system, the amount of personnel it takes to run it. Our IT department is really top-notch, but they're also stretched to the limits. And we're implementing electronic equipment, digital equipment for students all across the district. Having an external vendor give us something that can give us instant feedback, can help us get instant feedback, can help us track things, is really an important thing to me. Half my phone calls as a board member come from people whose, someone's dropped the ball somewhere, or they think someone's dropped the ball. And having a system that someone can pull up and say, you know, so-and-so talked to them on this day, so-and-so talked to them on this day, it just makes sense to me. The second thing is, when it takes time to create a system, I can remember learning new software, just learning new software, not even developing it. It takes me a couple of weeks, couple of months to get really proficient at using it. This is ready for people to use, and we've had pretty good feedback from staff, especially at the building level, the external building level. I know that a couple of the principals who worked with it gave us really good feedback. That was presented in our work session. When you do new software, when you create, you have to work out the bugs. If you all remember the, not synergy, but the system we had prior to synergy that didn't work so well. My new colleagues might not remember that, but some of us are still stinging from that one. So I like the idea of having something that we can try. It's a three-year contract, it's not a lifetime commitment. If something doesn't work out, and we kind of figure it out in the second year and say, okay, somebody better get too busy, and put something in place. But just remember, whatever we do, whether it's to develop a system, it's going to have personnel costs, it's going to have costs that we're going to have to incur, and we have to make the decision on how we're going to spend those resources. That's our responsibility. I think this will be good. I like the tracking, I like the feedback, and I like the dashboard. Matt, I saw your hands.
As we've talked to this company they provide for other districts, any idea how many cases we might be handling through this in the course of a year when fully implemented?
Well, you know, once we, we had close to 500 just using, for the most part, Central Office and a couple of schools. So we would anticipate as we build this out, there'll be several thousand. You know, and we're not looking, I mean, schools across the, and Mr. Neal contacted at least 10 schools, five, eight, five to 10 schools. You know, everybody's using it a little bit differently. We intend to really use this as a communication vehicle, which means that, you know, we want things entered into Let's Talk, so we have that tracking system and that dashboard. I think it would be fair to expect that a year from now, we're talking about several thousand.
Per year?
Yeah. Or more?
Annie?
My memory serves me correctly, too, one of the, that the feedback, people feedback was that there was a big difference between liking it from people at the buildings and here at the district. Has that been looked at, handled? Or will that be part of, like, the training? Is there training too?
Yes, we took the feedback that we received from people at LPSDO in the building and then working with the other members of the executive team and people that were part of the pilot. We reshaped the implementation so that as it's implemented moving forward, we took those elements that people found to be duplicating their work and tried to eliminate those, whether it was direct entry using email, whether it was switching who was the original contact to try to narrow the original contact, which both sped up response time and narrowed the number of people that had to enter into the system at any one time. We think we've alleviated many of those issues. We'll only know as we go through the implementation process. But that's the thing that we need to continue to monitor, is working with those people that implement, making sure it works and make tweaks as we go along. But we tried to pay very close attention to the feedback that we received.
Any other questions? Ready for the vote? Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Schulte? Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes.
Ms. Mungard?
Yes.
Mrs. Danic?
Yes. Motion is approved. Moving on, we have informational items and reports. We have the budget calendar from Chair of the Finance Committee, Don Mayhew, and Dr. Liz Standish.
I have the pleasure of serving on the Finance Committee along with Connie Duncan and Annie Mungard. And as is part of our annual process, it's that time of the year where we are ready to present a proposed budget calendar for the year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Liz.
Sure. We do bring forward a budget calendar, and March 1 is the timeline where then we're able to communicate to the public what our intentions are to move forward, so public can participate in the process. The Finance Committee discussed the calendar, and Attachment Number 3 really outlines the calendar in the format we've traditionally followed. We do have a milestone document we've kind of created just to kind of let people know the role of staff, the role of board members, and how we progress through this process. But the more linear fashion on Attachment 3 walks us through. Traditionally, we've had the general fund budget presented to the public mid-June. We would continue with that tradition with the June 14 budget work session. And then that is followed by two opportunities for public input, one at 5:00 PM and then one at 7:00 PM. We are looking at having the one on June 28 at 5:00 PM here at District Office. And then the Finance Committee would like to maybe pick a different location for the second one to kind of spread our geography out a little bit, so we'll determine that in the near future. We have traditionally had our second work session later in July. And our second work session is when we have the whole picture. So not just general fund, but we have bond fund, and we can really tell the community what the total levy would be. And so we're looking at moving that up to June 30, and we would have it prior to the input session. Not that we would change the format of the input session, that would stay the same, but it would give us an opportunity to get that information out into the community a little bit sooner. If we think we have public input on that July 14, or the June 14 date that comes forward, and then someone's sitting in the work session and they hear the new information on the total picture and want to add that to the input session, I think we're all welcome and open to having that longstanding input from the public, welcome anytime. Board members would, as they have in the past, have a July board meeting that they'd be able to come and publicly talk about the whole picture. So it's really just getting information out in the community a little bit sooner, and then it gives us plenty of time if the board wants another work session or Finance Committee has some more work to do. We'd have the month of July to do that. We do walk through with the public hearing. We have the whole package pulled together by then. That is an extensive effort by staff to put together the book that we produce. And then we have budget approval occurring in August. I will report that we're marching on forward. We do have state aid certification based on current law, so as we're marching through this process, it's pretty much a repeatable, predictable process for the community. But I did want to point out, moving up the second work session that has been in July to June, so that we all understand that's a little bit of a variation. Be happy to answer questions. This is just an information item, that's all that's required by board policy, and it is something that then we get posted on our website and we begin to communicate in the public. I also need to say that we are open to giving presentations to community groups anytime, anywhere. So we have a list of groups that have kind of been key stakeholders in the past. Those are not ones that reach out to us every year, but we're open. So if any of you have groups that are interested, or there's community groups out there that would like a budget presentation, we're happy to do that.
Don, do we know what the statutory deadline is for budget approval? I know we have that, but can you, can you share that?
Yep, and it should be on the milestone document. So you should have the September, yep, September 20.
Okay. Thank you. So if something comes up, we can actually delay this if we need to, correct?
I'm looking for a nod from Sherri. Yep, just making sure.
Don?
The timing here is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and this did generate a little bit of discussion in the Finance Subcommittee meeting. But the idea is, is that the world has changed a little bit. You'll remember when we used to get state aid certification much later in the year, and now we're getting it in February. And in our ongoing efforts to be transparent and get information out to the public as soon as possible, and recognizing that getting, having the second work session on June 30 and having that overlap with a public forum would not have any substantive effect on that public forum, but wanting to be sure that as soon as we're getting information, we're getting it out to the public. we're getting it out to the public, so that people can be part of the conversation as early as possible. So that's, that's the effort here.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. And from the Career Academy, Mr. Boswell?
Yes, thank you. An update on recruiting for the Career Academy. So far, we've had 306 students that have applied to attend the Career Academy next year, and that compares to 260 who had applied last year at this time. And of the applicants for this year, I wanted to note that 56 are from North Star. We've had some discussions about Career Academy helping relieve overcrowding at North Star. The high school with the most applicants, though, is Southeast with 75. We also had some discussions at our last joint board meeting about what total enrollment could look like next fall. And if we estimate about 280 of those 306 attending the Career Academy and 120 returning from this year, we'd have an enrollment around 400 students, which is up from our current enrollment of about 275. Also wanted to note that because this is a two-year program, when we go into the second year, staff is also working on developing curriculum for the second year of each of the pathways, and also working on the preliminary discussions on the proposed budget for next year. And the final item, I guess, we've been discussing a facility use agreement for the Career Academy. Our next joint board meeting is on March 9, and I would be open to any comments or questions.
Okay, we'll move on. Amy? Amy?
Are we kind of on track of numbers, of what we're, like, you know, when the original plan was laid out, and what in the second year would be like?
Yeah, when, the original plan gave a capacity for the Career Academy of 1,000 students in two sessions, so 500 in the morning, 500 in the afternoon. We expected to open around 30% of that capacity, and so we're about 275 right now. We opened a little higher than that. I think we'd talked somewhere in the 400 to 500 range for the second year. So depending on how things fall out, we'll either be at the, the low end of that, or we'll be in the middle of that range, so.
Any other questions? All right. Dr. Joel, Superintendent's update?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Danick. You know, it's snow day, it's good that we have fun in the snow days, because they really are enjoyable in, in Lincoln. And when I write my book on, you know, this, the role of the superintendent, this is going to be the most important chapter. Because we called it off that first night about 8:00 or 8:30, it gave the kids a great opportunity to, to engage with, with me. And I remember, one in particular was a young man who just said to me that, please accept his apology for all the cars that he was going to hit on his way to school tomorrow morning, because I hadn't called it off by then. That's, I just want you to know, that's why I made the decision to do that. I figured all those wrecks we couldn't handle. Legislation is, we're about halfway through the session. And, and I know Mr. Neal and our Board Legislative Committee working hard. We obviously have a, a big stake in a, in a lot of the key bills and priority bills, particularly as they relate to school funding. In March, we're going to be doing the Face the Chamber. Actually, Dr. Hoensie is going to be the primary speaker. I'm going to do a bit part, just do a district update. So if you're interested, Face the Chamber is always a fun event, and I know we have great attendance at that. And then kudos to Human Resources and under the leadership of Dr. Weber. As you noted, in, as you noticed in the, the report, the consent report about folks getting hired, they're doing a tremendous job of getting out in front of the hiring. You know, we anticipate up to another 400, 350 to 400, and we're getting people early, even with unassigned con...